Now, we're going to move on to item number six, which is public hearing. And city clerk.
Okay, so this might take me a little bit. It's a very long title, just one moment. Item six A, hold a public hearing and take the following actions associated with the Bay Hill specific plan. Adopt resolution approving the water supply assessment report for the proposed Bay Hill specific plan. Adopt resolution certifying an environmental impact report in adopting CEQA findings, facts, statement of overriding considerations, and the mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the Bay Hill specific plan in Google Phase One project. Adopt resolution amending the San Bruno general plan to ensure consistency with the Bay Hill specific plan. Adopt resolution adopting the Bay Hill specific plan for the Bay Hill area of the city. Waive first reading and introduce ordinance adding chapter 12.290 Bay Hill specific plan districts to the City of San Bruno Municipal Code establishing regulations for parcels within the Bay Hill specific plan. Waive first reading and introduce ordinance amending the City of San Bruno zoning map for the Bay Hill specific plan area. The end.
Thank you. Good job, yes. That's why she's the president. So on this item, I wanted to first let folks know that all of the council members have received... I'm sorry. There's a hand up in the city manager, city attorney?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, we will be taking items six A and six B simultaneous and holding those public hearings simultaneous. So the city clerk needs to read in item six B at the same time. Just wanted to make that clarification.
Okay.
Ready. I can do this. Okay. Item six B, hold a public hearing and take the following actions to approve Google LLC's Phase One development located in the Bay Hill Office Park. Adopt resolution approving a phased vesting tentative tract subdivision map with lotline adjustments. Realignment of Grundy Lane involving vacation of current public roadway and utility easements and dedication of new roadway right-of-way and fee and granting of new utility easements and vacation of a portion of Elm Avenue as shown on the map for Google LLC's property in the Bay Hill area of the city. Waive first reading and introduce ordinance approving a development agreement between the City of San Bruno and Google LLC, a California limited liability company for the Google project located in the Bay Hill Office Park. Adopt resolution approving an architectural review permit for Phase One of Google LLC's development plans in the Bay Hill area of the city. Adopt resolution authorizing various curb marking changes along frontages of 900 Cherry Avenue and 1,000 Cherry Avenue in the Bay Hill area of the city for Phase One of Google LLC's development plans.
Thank you again. At this time, I just wanted to let it be known that the council have received emails on this project. Most that I have seen up until just a moment ago have been in support of the project. And again, there's one on housing that we just received just a short time ago. So I wanted that to be known that your... the council has received those. It will be part of the record. In addition to that, on item six A, I'm going to need to recuse myself due to the fact that I live with in proximity of the Bay Hill specific plan. Not the whole project, but just within the boundaries of the specific plan, which encompasses all of Bay Hill. On item six B, I... there are four bullet points. On the last two, I have been advised by the city attorney that I am able to participate and vote, however, due to, you know, the importance of this project, very important project, and how much it's been done and to have continuity. Don't want to create any risk or appearance of voting... not voting on a couple items, been voting on the last two that I was directed. And at this point, I'm going to recuse myself from item six A and six B, and I feel that's in the best interest of the city. So at this time, I will turn it over to Vice Mayor Marty Medina.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I think we're ready to go to staff.
Evening, Vice Mayor, members of the city council, members of the public, those both watching on Zoom and at home. My name is Javon Grogan, and I have the pleasure of being San Bruno City Manager. But I will begin our presentation today, but I am certainly backed up by an amazing team of both staff and consultants that have worked diligently on this project. I see on Zoom that we have more than three times as many people as normally attends our meetings on Zoom, and there are others watching on the YouTube platform and also streamed via Channel One, the city's government access channel. So welcome all. This is a very important night for the City of San Bruno. We're here today with the request that came in nearly five years ago from YouTube to expand their campus here in San Bruno. As we all know, YouTube's international headquarters is here in the City of San Bruno. And they came in... the first internal staff meetings were held in October 2016 with YouTube's desire to expand their footprint. And in May 2017, the city council approved a contract with a planning firm called Diet and Batia to begin the planning work on what you have before you, which is called the Bay Hill specific plan. There's a number of actions, 10. The city clerk read through them. We'll touch on them throughout tonight. I also want to say that there are two public hearings, but there will be one presentation on all of the 10 action items and both public hearing items. The public hearing item number one is with regard to the Bay Hill specific plan, and the public hearing number two is with regard to the YouTube Phase One development. That also includes a number of actions related to the development agreement. It's also important to note that the actions before the city council are in the name of Google. Google is the company that owns YouTube. We will use Google and YouTube interchangeably. YouTube is the primary occupant of the buildings that Google owns in the Bay Hill Office Park and intends to be the primary occupant of the expanded campus. But know as we talk tonight, we will use Google and YouTube interchangeably. It is also important, ground setting, to know that while the work that was undertaken for the Bay Hill specific plan was done at the request of Google and YouTube and funded by Google and YouTube at a cost of over $3 million for the... all of the work that has taken place to date, it is extremely important for the public and the city council to know that the Bay Hill specific plan is a city document. It was done at the direction of the city in partnership with various consultants, albeit the entity that paid for all of that work was Google YouTube, but it is very much a city document and was led and directed by the city. So the presentation tonight is very detailed. There are 12 items on our agenda. I'll go over them really quickly. We'll talk about the objective. I'll introduce the Bay Hill team. We'll provide a little background. We will go through the final environmental impact report and the water supply assessment. We will talk about the necessary general plan amendments to accommodate the additional square footage. We will give a detailed presentation on the Bay Hill specific plan itself, as well as the new Bay Hill plant permit. We will talk about the zoning ordinance and the zoning map amendments that are necessary. We will also talk about the Phase One development. And this, when we begin to talk about Phase One, what we mean is Phase One of a five-phase YouTube campus expansion that is envisioned to take place in the Bay Hill Office Park in over the next 15 to 20 years. The best intended map, the architectural review permit and various curb markings, a development agreement with Google that outlines various requirements for both Google and the city and provides community benefits, and we will talk about that. Final recommendations, next steps, and questions. So the objective tonight, the city clerk read them. I will not read all of these, but again, six A, which is to hold a public hearing and take the following actions associated with the Bay Hill specific plan. There are a total of six items under item six A related to the Bay Hill specific plan. Approving the water assessment report and the proposed... for the proposed specific plan. Certifying the final environmental impact report. Adopting a resolution amending the San Bruno general plan to ensure consistency with the new Bay Hill specific plan and adopting the Bay Hill specific plan for the Bay Hill area of the city. Waiving the first reading of an ordinance that will add language to chapters 12.290 of... that will include Bay Hill specific plan districts within our municipal code and various parcels related to that. And then waiving the first reading to introduce an amendment of the city's zoning map for the Bay Hill specific plan. It's also important to note that this is the first of two action nights for the city council with regard to this proposed development and specific plan. The actions that are on tonight include a number of resolutions as well as ordinances. Ordinances, as the city council knows, requires two readings. We have planned for that second reading to occur on October 12th for the two ordinances that you have shown on this screen, as well as two more ordinances that are part of item six B. And these are related to Google's Phase One development located within the Bay Hill Office Park. The first one is a resolution... I'm sorry, there's one ordinance as a part of this. The first one is a resolution approving the phased vesting tentative map, lotline adjustments, and various other roadway utility easements and dedications and vacations of portions of Elm Avenue. We'll talk all about this. I know that there are thousands of pages that have been provided to the city council and reviewed by the planning commission and various public meetings and online. Waiving the first reading of a ordinance approving a development agreement between the City of San Bruno and Google for this five-phase development. Adopting a resolution approving an architectural review permit for the Phase One of Google's expansion. And lastly, a resolution authorizing various curb marking changes along the frontages of 900 and 1,000 Cherry Avenue. Bay Hill team introduction. So you have myself, the city manager. You have Mark Zaffaronal, your city attorney, that has spent countless hours on this project. Pamela Wu, our community and economic development director, who will give a portion of the presentation shortly. Matthew Newbomber, the lead planner on this effort that has been with this project since 2016. Heyuan Ritchie, our interim public works director, and Joanna Clock, the associate civil engineer. Supported by a robust team of consultants, this was and is a major undertaking for the City of San Bruno, and we needed to bring in expertise as well as adjunct staff to support and manage this process, as well as legal advice. And so available tonight to answer questions from the city council, this is just a summary of the project team, but these are the individuals available tonight. We have Ed Schaefer from Burke William Sorenson, our special real estate legal counsel, supported various aspects of this project, including the development agreement. Heidi Mickelson from ICF, our EIR consultant. So if we get into any detailed environmental impact report questions, Ms. Mickelson is here. Elaine Castello from Management Partners, as well as Dan Marks, serving as co-project managers for the bulk of the development of the specific plan. Individuals with long backgrounds in city government, Elaine being the former community and economic development director in various cities, and Dan Marks similar, really provided a lot of expertise and horsepower for this very long effort. Patrick O'Keefe from Management Partners, again, another project manager, really came on to support the negotiations around the development agreement, and that process is available tonight. Taylor McAdams from Fair and Peers, our transportation consultant. A lot of transportation information has been provided and maybe talked about. We want a tailor available for any questions. Terry Bottomle from Bottomle Design and Planning, a urban design consultant, is available. There's a lot of urban design and concepts and architectural terms that I will butcher by tribe, but we have someone here to support the city council. And lastly, Jason Moody from EPS Economic Planning Systems, which was the city's economic consultant on the project. So with that, you do have a fairly elaborate presentation from staff, followed by a brief presentation from the applicant, and then we will take council questions on the presentations and then public comment, and then return back to the city council for deliberations and action. Thank you. I will now turn it over to Pamela Wu, the community and economic development director for the City of San Bruno. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager Grogan. Good evening, Honorable Vice Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Pamela Wu, your community and economic development director. Tonight, I have the pleasure with the Bay Hill team to provide you the background, and we'll start with the background on the Bay Hill specific plan. How do we get to where we are today? So back in May of 2017, YouTube approached the city of proposing to construct an additional office building in the Bay Hill Office Park, which necessitated a need to provide a comprehensive guidance for the entire 92 acres for Google YouTube grows in the next 20 years. As the plan area sits in the center of several major transportation hubs adjacent to Interstate 280 and 380, and is within miles to San Bruno Caltrans and Bark Station, it is important that regulatory framework for the properties in a very... in a planned area is well established. As I previously mentioned, the plan area comprises about 92 acres and is bounded by Interstate 380 to the north, 280 to the west, San Bruno Avenue to the south, and a TCP transaccordial planned area boundary to the east. The planned area does not include the two properties along the intersection of El Camino and San Bruno Avenue. This is an aerial shot, and I'm sure everyone is familiar with this picture, showing the current configuration of the Bay Hill specific plan area. As I mentioned, 380 is in your backdrop... 380 is on your right, 280 is your backdrop. And the reason Google picked this area is that this... the Bay Hill Shopping Center has been established... the Bay Hill Office Area has been established since 1970, given that this is the city's premier employment hub, where it's home to YouTube, the headquarters, in addition to Walmart.com and the police credit unit. Within the Bay Hill specific plan area, a total of 2.46 million square feet of additional regional office development is proposed. And we're also proposing to maintain the Bay Hill Shopping Center and retail uses that's convenient to the San Bruno community and would be able to accommodate new or expanded hotel uses. With a housing overlay, there will be a possibility to provide a total of 573 housing units, and then it will provide a development design standard for the planning area that will shave an enhanced public ground that provides for transportation and infrastructure improvements. The planned implementation through the adoption of the amended general plan and the new Bay Hill zoning district will clarify use clarification and regulations. This is a chart showing you how has the city staff and the Bay Hill consulting team spent the last five years. So the journey started right around mid-2017 at YouTube's request to start the preparation of the specific plan. Right around 2017 to 2018, there were countless public meetings and workshops held with members of public that guided the vision statement, provided guiding principles, and prepared an alternative report that really was a community-driven process. By October 30th, 2018, city council and the planning commission held the very first joint study session that provided a preliminary direction on the specific plan, options and also policies. Not too long after that, in December of 2018, council also selected specific plan preferred alternative analysis to be included in the draft EIR. Fast forward to July 30th, 2019, city council had the second joint study session with planning commission to get an update of what's going on on the specific plan, a draft EIR, and a proposed phase plan. Who can forget what happened in 2020? COVID hit us, but we did not stop working. In July of 2020, city council provided direction to staff to incorporate a formulaic community benefit approach into specific plan. Coming over to 2021, which is a busy year, in January, staff released the draft specific plan and the draft environmental report in January, followed by a 45 comment review period, where the planning commission received the comments from the members of public in February, and then followed by a meeting to the ALUC in March, and also the TSPC committee considered the curb markings in May, where planning commission forwarded favorable recommendation to city council unanimously, and on August 17th. As City Manager Grogan mentioned, after a long and exhaustive process, close to five years in making, city staff and consulting team worked diligently to embrace the community's vision as identified in the draft specific plan. We're proudly announced to you that we're at the one of the two hearings where city council can formally approve the project. With that said, I am going to turn the table to Elaine Custodello, who is the lead consultant from Management Partners, who will walk you through the specifics of the Bay Hill specific plan. Elaine, are you on?
I think we were going to do the EIR first.
I am so sorry. You are right, Elaine. I am looking at the slide, and it says EIR, and I read the wrong. So Heidi Mickelson from ICF is going to do the EIR and also the water supply assessment report for us. Heidi?
Yes, can everyone hear me okay? Can you hear me? Can you hear us? Oh, you can? Okay. Great. Thanks. Oh, okay. So thank you, Pamela. Good evening, Vice Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Heidi Mickelson. As staff mentioned, I'm the city's EIR consultant with ICF. I'll be presenting you tonight with a brief summary of the final EIR analysis and conclusions, which includes the water supply assessment. Next slide, please. The EIR consists of a draft EIR and a final EIR. The draft EIR was released on January 14th, 2021, for a 45-day public review and comment period. The EIR includes a program-level analysis of the specific plan and a project-level analysis of the Phase One development. With this approach, the EIR provides the environmental review that is needed under the California Environmental Quality Act, or CEQA, to support both the adoption of the specific plan and full entitlement of the Phase One development. This approach also allows the EIR to serve as a program-level document that can be used for streamlining future environmental review for projects within the specific plan area. For the program-level analysis, the EIR defines two build-out scenarios, the maximum office scenario and the maximum housing scenario. The maximum office scenario assumes that the maximum amount of office space, approximately 4 million square feet, is developed, and no housing is developed within the housing overlay. Conversely, the maximum housing scenario assumes that the maximum number of residential units, which is 573, is developed within the housing overlay, and the office density is reduced accordingly to about 3.5 million square feet. Each topic in the EIR evaluates the impacts of the worst-case build-out scenario for that topic. It's important to note that the city is not being asked to approve either the maximum office scenario or the maximum housing scenario. Rather, these are scenarios that were created specifically for the purposes of the EIR analysis. The actual build-out under the specific plan would likely be a hybrid or a blend of these two scenarios. As required by CEQA, the EIR also evaluates three alternatives, including a no-project alternative, which assumes no changes to existing conditions, a residential alternative, which would allow up to 1,499 residential units, and an increased height alternative, which would increase allowable building heights in the project site to 70 feet or five stories, and would require voter-approved... a voter-approved modification to ordinance number 1284. The increased height alternative, which was studied at the request of council, would allow up to 1,070 residential units. Next slide, please. CEQA establishes four levels of environmental impact. Impacts where there's no impact, impacts that are less than significant, impacts that are less than significant with mitigation, and impacts that are significant and unavoidable. The term "significant and unavoidable" is established by CEQA, and the lead agency can only make this finding after identifying and incorporating all feasible mitigation measures and alternatives. In deciding whether to certify an EIR and approve a project, the lead agency's focus is generally on impacts that are found to be significant and unavoidable or less than significant with mitigation. In the case of the specific plan and the Phase One development, several impacts were determined to be less than significant with mitigation, as shown here. These include impacts on air quality, energy, greenhouse gas emissions, hydrology and water quality, and noise. There are other impacts that were found to be less than significant with mitigation that are not listed on this slide, and those include impacts to utilities and service systems, and in the case of the Phase One development, transportation. Next slide, please. Impacts that were determined to be significant and unavoidable are shown here. All of the significant and unavoidable impacts would result from the specific plan. The EIR analysis found that the Phase One development would not result in any significant and unavoidable impacts. The significant impacts for the plan include air quality impacts associated with both criteria air pollutants, which are pollutants that are regulated under the Clean Air Act, and toxic air contaminants, which are localized pollutants that can cause health effects on sensitive receptors such as diesel particulate matter. It's important to note that the EIR does include mitigation measures that could mitigate these impacts to a less than significant level. These include measures that require developers to pay offset fees for criteria air pollutant emissions that exceed emission standards, and a measure that requires the preparation of project-specific health risk assessments for projects that would emit toxic air contaminants within 1,000 feet of sensitive receptors. If these mitigation measures are successfully implemented by future projects, air quality impacts could be reduced to a less than significant level. However, because we don't know with certainty at this time whether the specific offsets that might be needed for any given project would be available, or whether health risk assessments could fully mitigate the toxic air contaminant impacts of any given future project, the EIR conservatively concludes that these impacts would remain significant and unavoidable. The EIR also concludes that transportation impacts associated with vehicle miles traveled would be significant and unavoidable for the specific plan. This is with the implementation of mitigation that requires tenants to implement transportation demand management, or TDM, programs. In order to have a less than significant VMT impact, a TDM program would need to achieve a 43% drive-alone rate. And while this could be possible for some tenants, including YouTube, which does have a very robust TDM program, the EIR recognizes that not all tenants would be able to achieve this level of torque reduction, and determines that the impact would be significant and unavoidable for the specific plan. Lastly, when an agency approves a project that would result in significant and unavoidable impacts, CEQA requires the agency to adopt what is called a statement of overriding consideration. This is one of the actions for you tonight. The statement of overriding considerations is included in your agenda packet, and it describes the reasons for approving the project despite its significant environmental effects. These can generally include economic and policy considerations, such as job creation and housing development. Next slide, please. Moving on to the contents of the final EIR, the city received a total of 11 comment letters on the draft EIR, including four letters from public agencies, including the Bay Area Air Quality Management District, Caltrans District Four, the SFO Airport Land Use Committee, and the San Francisco Public Utilities Commission. Two organizations, the Sierra Club and YouTube, also commented on the draft EIR, and the city received comments from nine individuals at the February 16th Planning Commission hearing. The majority of the comments that were submitted in response to the draft EIR were actually comments on the specific plan, requesting clarification on the specific plan requirements and various other plan details. Chapter three of the final EIR includes written responses to all of the comments received. Some revisions were made to the draft EIR, including some of the mitigation measures, either in response to the comments or as staff initiated changes. These revisions are included in chapter four of the final EIR. All of the revisions that were made to the draft EIR clarified or amplified information in the draft EIR and do not require recirculation under CEQA. I'll also note here that the final EIR appendices include an addendum to the water supply assessment for the... include an addendum to the water supply assessment for the WSA that was prepared for the project and included in the draft EIR. The city did not receive any comments on the WSA, but staff elected to prepare the WSA addendum in recognition of the fact that the statewide landscape regarding water supply, as I'm sure you are well aware of, has changed quite noticeably or notably since the original WSA was prepared in 2019. The WSA addendum, which is based on the city's draft 2020 Urban Water Management Plan, which is scheduled for approval later this year, confirms the findings of the original WSA, that is, that sufficient supplies would be available to serve the project, including under dry-year conditions. This would be with implementation of the city's water shortage contingency program. The WSA, as amended by the WSA addendum, must be adopted by separate resolution prior to project approval in order to ensure that the project is in compliance with the California Water Code. Lastly, to certify the EIR and approve the project, council must adopt the required findings under CEQA and the mitigation monitoring program, which includes the final mitigation measures that will be required for development under the specific plan, including the Phase One development. Each of these items is also included in your agenda packet. And with that, I will hand it back over to the team to talk about the general plan amendments.
Thank you Heidi. As Heidi mentioned, the next one in the law order of action is the general plan amendment. And why we're doing a general plan amendment? This is to ensure that there is a vertical planning document consistency. The general plan amendment focuses on the introduction of new land use destination and a new zoning district that has been provided in the Bay Hill specific plan. Specifically, we're creating a consistency to make sure that Bay Hill Regional Office and the Bay Hill neighborhood commercial land use districts are documented in the general plan as the general plan has been prepared prior to the adoption of the specific plan. We want to make sure that there are other minor text amendments that the two documents are consistent. Now I'm going to turn over to Elaine to talk about the Bay Hill specific plan.
I'm on video and the people can hear me. Vice Mayor and members of the city council, my name is Elaine Costello. I'm from Management Partners and I've been a project manager on this project. And I want to start off, the specific plan starts off with guiding principles and those principles were developed, really built on the work that had been done with the community in 2017 and 2018, the vision statement, the guiding principles document. And then the later, from 2017 to 2020, there were several meetings with the city council and the planning commission where we also got input. And from that, we developed these guiding principles and they have really guided the creation of the specific plan with a focus on a mixed-use walkable district, quality design and enhanced public realm, improving multimodal mobility, relying, in other words, relying less on the car, fostering housing development, which is not currently allowed in the area, integrating the... Next slide, please. The plan is organized into seven chapters and a very robust appendix about all of the road improvements. I'm going to go through each of those chapters briefly and give you the highlights of what's in the plan. Next slide, please. Can you, can you hear me, Pamela? Okay.
I can hear you.
Okay, great, thank you. Really a key, a really key component, kind of a building block of the whole plan is the office development policies. And this is a uniquely good location for new office development. It's an existing office park, for one thing. It has unusually good access to both regional road transportation and transit. Both BART and Caltrain are easily accessible from the site, which is very unusual. And finally, there YouTube has an interest in creating a campus. YouTube owns most of the land in the planning area, in the office part of the planning area. It owns 10 of the 13 lots. And it has also had an excellent track record of being able to implement very successful programs to reduce the number of single occupancy vehicles and the traffic that new office development creates. So with all of that in mind, the plan permits 2.46 million square feet of additional office, regional office development. That development is allocated on a parcel-by-parcel basis. And as community development director Wu mentioned earlier, we are doing this, it's a 20-year plan. And so we know that things are going to change over that 20 years. So the policies also allow a limited transfer of office development between parcels in order to accommodate any changes that will be needed to take place over time. The next slide, please. So you can see the light orange here is the areas, everything that's shown in light orange is actually designated for office development in the plan. But there is more than just office development. If we can just keep this slide up, I'll go through the next. There's also retail and hotel uses that exist within the plan area. There's an existing Bay Hill Shopping Center, which we've heard through all of the public input was very valued by the community. So the requirement, the plan requires that the square footage of commercial be maintained, even if the, even if the shopping center is redeveloped, it still has to maintain the same level of retail square footage, which is one of the policies of the plan. The plan also accommodates new hotel and expanded hotel uses. So another area of flexibility, we did allocate land, allocate square footage by parcel, but we left some square footage, about 181,000 square feet, unallocated and give a priority to new hotel and retail for that use. And finally, I think we can go to the next, well, we can stay on this one, thank you. As you see where there's kind of hatching, residential has not been allowed in this area in the past and we knew from the work that we had done with the council and with the community that there was a desire to allow housing in the plan area. So we, the group that worked on, and this was very much of a team effort, the team that worked on the development of the specific plan looked and thought, where is a good location for residential? And the plan recommends that new residential be shown in the hatched areas along San Bruno Avenue, where it's across the street from existing residential. We think that's a good way to integrate new residential with existing residential. So those two residential overlays allow 573 units. Of that, 210 can go into the Bay Hill mixed-use overlay at the shopping center and 363 can go in along San Bruno Avenue at 801-851-Trager and 1111 Bay Hill Drive. So we're, the plan allows quite, we can go to the next, we can go to urban design, please, which I think is the next slide. Okay. The plan is allowing a lot of development. And so we really, it was a focus of the team to make sure that that development would be successful and would be attractive and we knew that was one of the, the key objectives. So a lot of, if we can go to the next slide, which I think is a plan of the streets, yes, okay. One of the key things in the plan is to enhance the pedestrian environment. We try, we realize we want people to drive less, to get out of their, to get out of their car and walk around or use a bicycle. And so we want to make this an attractive area for people to walk. The big focus of the plan was to make the streets more attractive and walkable and enhance pedestrian environment. There are requirements for street trees throughout so that people can walk in shaded areas in the summer. There are planting strips between the pedestrian and the traffic that will also be used for stormwater management. There is pedestrian-oriented street lighting. And in some locations, and that's on all streets, and in some locations along Bay Hill, and they're shown with the thicker green line here, along Bay Hill and Elm and Trager, there's something more, there's something we call greenways, which are continuous, publicly accessible, privately owned and maintain linear open spaces, where people will be able to sit and, and walk and it'll be an even more enhanced area for the pedestrian. But in addition to these kind of improvements along the street, we wanted to create, the plan also creates some other kinds of open spaces. Very important, at the corner of Grundy and Cherry, there is an existing plaza. That plaza will be redesigned as the Cherry Avenue Plaza, redesigned to make it enticing and inviting to the public and it will be publicly accessible, but while it will still be privately maintained. In addition, YouTube will have their own private open spaces, interior courtyards, et cetera. There will be a lot of development and so we paid attention to the building design as well and the urban design chapter has policies that design features to reduce the impact of large and long buildings, reduce building massing. Remember, one of the really nice features of this plan as it's redeveloped, as the area redevelops, is that the parking will all be underground so that it will be a more active area than it is now where there are a lot of parking lots. And we tried to really take advantage of that change in the plan. So if we go, if we go forward, I think maybe one or two more slide, there we go. So just to give you some pictures, some drawings of what this is going to look like, the first one is kind of what, what an enhanced pedestrian environment along the offices is going to look like and with that planting strip between the pedestrian and the car with the new bicycle enhancements and then the wider sidewalks and mixed-use commercial environments and the buffer landscaping and prominent building entrances and stoops in the residential environment. Going to it on the next slide in just a little bit more detail. I want to show you kind of what an area, this is actually kind of looking at what Trager will look like when it's redeveloped. And as you can see, a typical frontage where there isn't a greenway would have a 30-foot average setback with a 10-foot minimum setback, but it would also have all the things we've talked about, the, the street trees, the curbside planters, the pedestrian-oriented lighting. And on the right side of this graphic, you can see a greenway condition, which is larger and you can see that there's more pathways where people could walk in and sit. And in those areas, there's a 30-foot minimum width and a 60-foot for some expanded open space areas with even more enhanced landscape and pedestrian amenities. It's going to be quite an active and attractive area. We did build in a little flexibility in the greenway with requirements to, to, again, we're constantly, we're constantly looking at knowing this is a 20-year plan and there needs to be some flexibility. So that's kind of, that's, that gives us, I hope gives you a sense of what's happening with the urban design chapter. And when we get to, when we get to the next part, we can do the next slide. Okay, what are we going to do about access? This is a specific plan. So actually, in a specific plan, this specific plan is very specific. It looks at every road segment and we'll just show you the areas that are outlined in yellow. There's a lot of detail in the plan about what's going to be done to enhance bicycle facilities along Bay Hill Drive and all of the streets, enhance pedestrian crossings. So for example, there'll be pedestrian beacons, which will make it safer for people to, to walk throughout the area. The area will be much safer for walking than it is right now and it'll become, might become more comfortable, the safety of pedestrians, medians where people can find refuge, it's kind of an elaborate term, but basically where someone, if you can't make it all the way across the street, you have a place to stand if the light is changing. These are the kinds of traffic control devices, new traffic control device there at the corner of Trager and San Bruno Avenue. Very elaborate, you see changes at the corner of El Camino and Bay Hill. The plan goes into a lot of detail in terms of what should be done with all of the roadways to create the kind of multimodal environment that the guiding principles and that the community has asked for. The next slide, please. We also wanted to look at how are we going to make it, how is the plan going to make it easier for transit? As we said, YouTube does a, has a very robust program of shuttles, but we wanted to make sure shuttle buses, we want to make sure that it's very useful in terms of reducing the amount of, of road traffic, of car traffic, but we wanted to make sure that we, we created an off-site multimodal facility, which will be in Phase One between Bay Hill and Grundy and it will accommodate the YouTube buses off the city streets. And we also are looking at some transit stops. As, as development goes on, we'll be looking at what kinds of improvements and the plan describes the kinds of improvements that are needed to encourage the use of transit, both public and private transit. Also, we do know people will be driving, some people. So we made sure that the plan ensured consistency with the city loading and parking standards for both vehicle and bicycle parking so we won't have the problem of parking in neighborhoods, overflow parking going into neighborhoods. Next slide, please. So we knew that we've done a lot in the plan to just encourage people to get out of their cars and bike and take transit and walk, but we also have requirements, some of which are dictated by state law and came out of the EIR, which requires that we look at the vehicle miles traveled per capita. And to keep that simple, we'll just say, as Ms. McElson from ICF said earlier, we have to get, new development will have to get to a point where 43% of new trips, less, 43% of less of new trips can occur by single occupancy vehicle. The rest of them, the majority, have to use some other alternative, public or private transit, car pools, whatever. That's a pretty high requirement. And we, in the plan, there is a whole system for property owners monitoring the trips, reporting the results. We have a vehicle mile, VMT monitoring and mitigation plan. And if the property owner does not meet the threshold, the city has the ability to initiate mitigation payments. So there are actually strict, pretty strict requirements to make sure that we are not have, that the majority of people are arriving at this, at the site out using something other than their own single occupancy vehicle. Next slide, please. And we knew it was important, the general plan has standards about the level of service, the flow of, we know people will be driving. What is the flow of traffic? And how, we looked at, the plan looks at 15 intersections and did studies of the level of service analysis at the AM and PM peak for all 15 of these intersections. From that, next slide, please. We developed a number of traffic flow improvement projects. They're really, a lot of them are focused along San Bruno Avenue and especially the relationship between San Bruno Avenue and 280. But also, we have a signalized intersection at Trager in San Bruno. And another really important thing in the plan is that throughout, at each subsequent, subsequent phase of development, all major signalized intersections, we looked at to optimize signal splits because that can really help, how you signalize, cycle lengths, all that, can help the flow of traffic. So we've included that. And as a result of all of these improvements, next slide, please. Hi, next slide, can you hear me? Okay. We did, the plan has a projection of what that's going to mean in the future, in 2040. Remember, it's a 20-year plan. What will be the effect on all of these intersection, of these intersections, of all the improvements and the focus on having people not drive their single occupancy vehicle and use alternatives? What's the likely impact to be? And as you can see, there are intersections, most study intersections will experience more delay in the future. It's minimal, in, at most cases, it's less than 10 seconds. There are places in the morning peak in particular that intersections like Cherry Avenue and Bay Hill Avenue and Bay Hill Drive and San Bruno Avenue and Elm will have a longer increase. in the delay. And there's a couple of cases where, for example, with the Traeger Avenue signalization, there'll actually be, once that is put into place, a slight decrease in delay. So we have really, really studied the whole issue of access from all the different modes. The next slide, please. The next chapter in the plan, which we also really carefully studied, taking a lot of time on this, was infrastructure improvements. We wanted to make sure that new development will be constructing or contributing their fair share of money to needed improvements to support new development. Next slide, please. So for example, on water supply and distribution, as Ms. Meckelson pointed out, the, the improvements are adequate even in a drought for this project. But there are improvements that will be needed over time. For example, upsizing water mains and adding water storage capacity to meet supply and fire flow requirements. And we detailed all of those in the plan. We also, to try and really worked on trying to reduce the demand for water by new development by installing, requiring installation of water-efficient appliances and fixtures. Similarly, we paid careful attention to wastewater, requiring hydraulic modeling when relocating main pipelines or, or changing them. And that the wastewater main within Grundy will be realigned. Stormwater was an important aspect. How do we, and the plan requires that every project demonstrate no net increase in stormwater discharge to the public system. That's zero, no net increase, which requires the incorporation of low-impact development design, sustainable landscaping to reduce irrigation and runoff. Put a lot of time and attention into that. The other topics that this chapter covers are dry utilities. We talk about parks, police, fire, library, and schools. The next chapter, next slide, please, is the environmental quality chapter. And here, we, the plan really builds on the work that was done in the EIR. So they, we took many, many, we took the mitigation measures from the EIR and incorporated them into the plan on these topics. Noise to mitigate the impact from the airport freeways, hazardous materials, air quality, greenhouse gases was a major emphasis. And so, for example, the plan requires that electrical space and water heating and solar roofs. We spent a lot of time on groundwater to ensure that the existing groundwater is protected. Similarly, archaeological and paleontological resources and the safety that the projects are built in a safe geological manner. Next slide, please. Okay, one of the great things, okay, I'm biased. But one of the really useful things about doing a specific plan is that unlike a lot of other planning documents, it's, it pays a lot of attention in a specific plan. You're required to pay a lot of attention to what are things gonna cost, when are they gonna be developed, how is this all gonna be implemented, and who is going to pay for it? And so we spent, that's, the implementation chapter is quite robust on this issue. So if we go to the next slide. Okay, the goal of the implement, of the implementation chapter is to ensure that development will pay its own way. We looked at all the infrastructure and service costs. The plan establishes an area development impact fee program for this planning area for the public improvements, capital improvements that will be required. And those are listed below for a total of forty-two million, of which the specific plan area pays about thirteen million. We're also requiring the establishment of right-of-way maintenance agreements, so that the developers, the property owners maintain the sidewalks and the lighting and the landscaping that they're putting in. And we also identify where we're gonna get dedications and easements. Next slide. One of the important things in this specific plan, and this was something that was brought to the city council last July of two thousand and twenty, is a community benefit program. What we've been talking about in the specific plan up till now is really how are we gonna accommodate the needs of the development itself? And this talks about how does this development make a contribution to improving the rest of the community? It goes beyond its specific impacts. So there's a community, the, the council last July authorized the city staff to work on and incorporate a community benefit program and laid out what that, what that program should basically entail. And it applies to that new development, it applies to development that exceeds what's allowed under the existing zoning. And it'd be indexed to inflation, but office will be paying thirty-five dollars a square foot of gross building space. That's where they're getting additional square footage above the existing zoning. And residential will be paying ten dollars per net square foot. There are some exemptions for small projects and affordable housing. And the developer, because the implement, because the specific plan has so many community benefits of ensuring that all the improvements that are needed are actually identified and paid for, the developer receives credit for payments toward the cost of preparing the specific plan and the EIR. That policy is in the specific plan. Next slide. So the revenues that we estimate from the specific plan buildup from the, we, the, one of the columns here is called amount included in the U2 DA. So we know now from the development agreement, which will be covered in more detail later in the presentation, how much U2 is gonna be paying under each of these categories. The area development impact fee that will be a result of this specific plan and is a policy of the specific plan, it's a new program. The citywide development impact fee, which the city already created a few years ago, that will be bringing in, for example, thirty-six million dollars from U2 over the life of the project, the affordable housing impact fee and the community benefits. So that, for example, U2 over the life of the project, if it's all built out as office, would be contributing fifty-six million. So between what's U2 will be paying and what's from other developments, the total in today's dollars is a hundred and forty-one million dollars based on maximum office development only. We had to pick one scenario and that's the one that we use to create these estimates. Next slide, I think that's it.
That's it.
Thank you. I'm gonna turn it back to the staff.
Thank you, Elaine. Can I advance my slide? There we go, there we go. So, thank you, Elaine. So we'll be going over the next section, which is the proposed zoning code amendment. So as I mentioned earlier, because the Bay Hill specific plan has introduced a new zoning district and also new development standard, specifically the Bay Hill Regional Office, the Bay Hill Neighborhood Commercial Zoning District, the residential overlay and mixed-use overlay. Part of the project is also to introduce a new zoning chapter in a zoning code that specifically dovetails into the Bay Hill specific plan. And this will provide a consistent development standard for all of the properties, whether they're Google-owned or non-Google-owned, such as the shopping center, so that there is a consistent development standard for future development. As I mentioned, the Bay Hill specific plan zoning ordinance will address the unallocated or allocation of new development, transfer of the square footage. It will provide setback, high lot coverage, minimum lot size, and in addition to building mass, landscaping, lighting, roofing, solar panel, you name it, it's all in the zoning code in the new zoning code amendment. So with all of the regulatory framework in mind, Google has also proposed to do a, what we call the phase one development project concurrently. And the phase one project will be almost like an expedited construction project. So with the specific plan in place, Google will be able to start construction right away. With that said, the phase one development includes the construction of two three-story office buildings totaling four hundred and forty thousand square feet and a three-level subterranean underground parking on the surface lot adjacent to existing nine hundred and one thousand Cherry. There will be a total of a thousand eight hundred ninety-six parking spaces provided, which replaced existing parking at the one-to-one ratio of nine hundred and one thousand Cherry. And then all of the new construction will provide a minimum of three space per one thousand square feet per the parking tow for any office use. And all of the onsite parking will be accommodated via standard parking spaces or tandem parking spaces or parking, mechanical parking lift. This illustrates a photo simulation of what the two three-story office building looks like. And in the phase one development, Google has also proposed the request of an architectural review permit, a vesting tentative map, as well as the curb marking along Cherry Avenue and also on Grundy Lane. Part of that also includes realigning and also strengthening the Grundy Lane. If you saw the map before, it's not a curvilinear road on Grundy Lane, but it's being straightened. And also, it will be providing a, what we call a off-street multimodal transportation hub for all of the U2 employees that will be within the planned area. There will also improve in what we call a Cherry Avenue Plaza at the northeast corner of Cherry Avenue. This will be a publicly accessible, privately maintained public space. The picture on the right upper corners is a depiction of the Cherry Plaza area. There will also be curb marking along Cherry Avenue and Grundy Lane for a bus stop or passenger loading as such to facilitate a different uses in the planned area. Lastly, the buildings located at eleven fifty to twelve fifty Bay Hill will be demolished to accommodate temporary parking. And this is a photo simulation provided by the Google design team, giving an idea of what the building looks like going down on Grundy with the two new office buildings on either side, where there are pedestrian enhancement, landscaping, trees, the bridge that's connecting the two buildings, an ideal conceptual drawing. As I mentioned, part of the entitlement includes a phased tentative map. And while we're doing that, the reason for doing it, for doing a tentative map is to realign and strengthening Grundy Road, which affects several parcels that are Google-owned, actually a total of eight parcels that are Google-owned. And also to abandon a portion of L Avenue to give back a portion of L Avenue to the adjacent property. This will not result any additional new lot through the phased tentative map. Again, this is the map that was, that has been submitted by the Google design team to show the before picture of the vesting tentative map. There's also another after picture showing the road being straightened and also L Road, the L Avenue being abandoned. Lastly, one of the many actions city councils asked to take tonight is to adopt a resolution, approve the curb markings. So this includes a hundred thirty-six feet of a white curb along Grundy Avenue for passenger loading and seventy feet of white curb for passenger loading along Cherry Avenue next to eighty feet of yellow curving that is for loading and unloading. In addition to, please excuse the typo, sixty feet of the red curb on Cherry Avenue for a San Trans bus stop, which is being relocated within the same block from the Cherry-Grundy intersection towards the Cherry-Bay Hill intersection to accommodate the bus stop. So the proposed curb markings have gone through TSPC review and received approval in May of two thousand and twenty-one. With that, I will turn the table back to City Manager Grogan to talk about the development agreement.
Thank you, city council and members of the public. I know it's a long presentation. We are just about done. So I will present a few slides on the development agreement. And we do have a signed copy from the Google Corporation within the package for council tonight of this proposed development agreement. Development agreements, as we know, provide certainty, definition and commitment as to the proposed development. And as to the necessary public improvements required by that development, they also provide clarity on the public benefits to the agency, in this case, the city. In San Bruno, development agreements are very common for large projects, such as this, that require at least two phases. The DA is between the city and the Google Corporation. On the screen, you have various lots, Lot One N, One North, and Lot One S on the left-hand side of the screen. And then Lots Two, Lots Three, Lot Four, Lot Five North, Lot Five South, and Lot Five East. The lot number is also synonymous with the phase. And so there are five phases as a part of the plan, U2, Google campus expansion. And so phases one, two, three, four, and five, and some of them have various parcels connected to them. The purpose, again, of a DA is that it provides those long-term approval rights. And it establishes and sets forth the set of regulations, for example, the Bay Hill specific plan, the general plan, the zoning amendments, and all the various codes. The DA that is before you is a DA that has really two terms, a total of twenty years are possible. But the initial term is fifteen years. And it provides certainty for the Google Corporation on community benefits, development impact fees, and various other fees. And also includes a prepayment of phases one and two that we'll talk a little bit about. As well as a possible five-year extension, so to go from fifteen years to twenty years, should at that time phases one, two, and three be completed. And so there is a, a measure of completion that is necessary before that additional five years can be granted. Again, that initial term is fifteen years with the potential for a five-year expansion. The DA includes a total prepayment for both phases one and two at the time of the first horizontal permit for phases one, for phase one, that will total fifty-six point two million dollars. That, that amount is, should the city council approve the, all the required approvals tonight and the second reading of the ordinances on October twelfth. It is anticipated that the city would receive that payment in mid-next year, twenty-two. The, the property development, the DA, again, equals vested rights for the specific plan zoning, vesting tentative map, architectural review permitted, permits, and various conditions of approval. Important note, local changes to local regulations will not apply to the project for the term of the DA. Again, a DA provides both certainty, certainty in terms of regulations and, and costs. And the project is not subject to a local moratorium or referendum after the initial period of expiration for the DA has expired. Fees, community benefit, you saw those figures. Community-wide development impact fees, it's the area development impact fees that U2 will pay their portion of for the property that they own. It's important to note that, as per the DA, it caps impact fees to our current impact fee, impact fees that we have, but allows adjustment based on an annual inflation index. The developer as a part of the DA, again, will prepay for phases one and two. Any unused prepaid portions will be credited back to the developer against the next development. That's accommodating for the possibility that the amount of square, the, the, many of the fees are actually based on square, square feet. And so if the developer prepays for phase two, and let's say that drops by five thousand square feet, those prepaid fees will be credited towards phase three. The developer will receive a credit against community benefits for seventy-five percent of the cost to develop the general plan amendment and the specific plan as well as the EIR. They do not own all the property within the office park, but they will receive a credit for the work that has gone into getting us to where we are. Talking construction materials, there will be a localization of a sales tax for all of the building materials and things that pay sales tax and a tax localization here to the city of San Bruno. And so we come to the end of the presentation. There are six items recommended as a part of the public hearing for item six A. I will not read, read through them again. And then four items with regard to item six B. I will not read, read through them again, and then four items with regard to item 6B. Next steps will be the final approvals of the, of these items in our discussions tonight, followed by a, a subsequent public hearing to waive the second reading of the ordinances. And that is the zoning ordinance amendment adding chapters 12.290 to the, adding the Bay Hill specific plan zoning district, the zoning math amendment for the Bay Hill specific plan, as well as the, the development agreement. All require second readings and subject to approval tonight will be scheduled for October 12th. So that is our staff presentation. We are available for any questions. It is a decision of the Vice Mayor. We do have the applicant, Google slash YouTube geared up to give a presentation. We can have that presentation now and then take a pause after that, or based on the council's desire, take a pause now and then have that presentation after a pause.
Council members, anybody have a preference? Councilman Hamilton?
I think it would make sense to, well, first of all, about having a pause, I think I'm fine to keep going. The, as far as, I, I think it would probably make sense to get the YouTube presentation first before opening up for questions because we may ask questions that are answered in that second presentation, which is my suggestion.
I agree. A nodded head, nodded head. Excellent. Okay, let's go.
So Drew Sherwood and Josh Portner from Google YouTube are, have appeared on the screen and we'll turn it over to Drew Sherwood.
Great. Thank you, City Manager Grogan. Before we get started, just a little bit of housekeeping to help everyone follow along. And there we go. Beautiful. So we're just going to direct people to, to view my colleague Samantha's screen. So this is great. All right. Well, good evening. My name is Drew Sherwood and I lead the Global Real Estate and Workplace Services for YouTube. And on behalf of our CEO, Susan Wojcicki, and all of the YouTubers who eagerly look forward to getting back to their offices in San Bruno as soon as it is safe to fully return, thank you for this time this evening to speak with you. You know, in 2006, YouTube was just a small internet video startup. And they left their rented offices located above an Amici's Pizzeria in San Mateo. And they moved to San Bruno in the Bay Hill office complex that you see in this photo on your screens tonight. Now, this decision was not a cavalier choice made late one night watching funny cat videos on the YouTube platform. Moving to San Bruno was a strategic business choice. It was a choice that was only possible because decades ago, San Bruno had the foresight to create a land use plan that led to the development of the Bay Hill Office Center. In this smart planning decision, concentrated office-focused development immediately next to the convergence of multiple freeways, major public transportation hubs like BART and Caltrain, and an international airport. And over the years, this area has attracted numerous Fortune 500 companies to San Bruno. This is an ideal location for office development. Now, as we all know, YouTube thrived after moving to San Bruno. And today, we are proud to be the world's leading media company, where we give everyone a voice and show them the world. But we had a real problem. We were proud to call San Bruno home and we wanted to stay. But we were running out of space to grow. So over four years ago, I had the privilege of standing in a room full of San Brunans at the senior center and sharing with the community, the city council and city staff that YouTube wanted to work together. Not just to build new buildings, but we wanted to create an opportunity where San Bruno would thrive as YouTube continued to grow. And that night, together, we all initiated the Bay Hill specific plan. Now, if I could see the attendees on this virtual call, I would probably recognize many familiar faces who have been on this multiple-year journey with us. And to all those members of the community, I want to say thank you. Thank you for the constructive feedback you've given us along the way to improve the project over these past several years. To city staff and all of our consultants, under the leadership and guidance of City Manager Joe Von Grogan, thank you for the thousands of hours of work on the Bay Hill specific plan. And to the esteemed members of City Council, thank you for your leadership to ensure that what was important to this community was always in clear focus. Our YouTube development team this evening will share more about the opportunity created by the Bay Hill specific plan. A plan that from YouTube alone will generate $130 million of revenue, including community benefits, development impact fees, affordable housing funding, and the potential to generate thousands of jobs across a wide range of industries. And at a time when so many communities are struggling due to the prolonged pandemic, we could not be more excited about the future for everyone in San Bruno. So now allow me to introduce you to Josh Portner, who leads our YouTube development team.
Thank you, Drew. Honorable City Council members, City of San Bruno staff and members of the community, would like to take a moment to echo Drew's sentiments. Since that first engagement with the City of San Bruno and members of the public, our development team has been given the opportunity to partner with the San Bruno community. And I too wish to thank all the participants in this process. Being in real estate development for YouTube has many benefits. But the one I personally enjoy the most is our community-based approach for creating place in the built environment. While other real estate developers are sometimes focused on other drivers, our main focus is on the user. At times, that user may be our own employees. But it is also the community of San Bruno and other stakeholders that will engage with our place, whether directly by walking through the Bay Hill complex or using Cherry Plaza, or indirectly through engagements with YouTube employees, shopping at Molly Stone's, or waiting for a table at a restaurant on San Mateo Avenue. In addition, designing for the user forces us to create a built environment that is mindful of the major issues at hand, including water conservation, climate change, and addressing housing needs, which you will hear more of in our presentation. In realizing the vision for our built environment with the specific plan, we have been collaborating with a world-class design team, including shop architects, who you will hear from tonight in realizing that design vision. The City Council's potential approval vote tonight will be a huge milestone toward the realization of needed growth here in the city we call home. Staff has already clearly presented the Bay Hill specific plan and associated environmental documents and zoning updates. So our team has put together a presentation focused mainly on YouTube's first phase of development proposed under the new Bay Hill specific plan aptly named Phase 1. Next slide, please. Our team has thought about all, how all our sites work together from an architecture, infrastructure, transportation and building system perspective. And while this evening, we will not take a deep dive into the entire campus, as much of it is purely conceptual, we wanted to take the opportunity to show how Phase 1 connects to the larger planned campus. Next slide. Staff and consultants have spent countless hours putting together a robust and thoughtful process to develop the package you see before you tonight. Along the way, we've gained intimate knowledge and gotten amazing feedback from the community that we have incorporated into the plan. This feedback includes information received from the Planning Commission roughly a month ago, when they unanimously recommended the project to City Council. I'd like to take a moment and thank all the commissioners for their thoughtful comments that evening. Next slide. YouTube views public benefits as a synergy of three elements. Baseline city development impact fees, community benefits and YouTube benefits. The monetary portion of these elements equates to $130 million of the lifetime of the project to the city of San Bruno. Next slide. As mentioned by City Manager Joe Von Grogan, YouTube has agreed that when we begin constructing the foundations for Phase 1, we will issue to the city both the fees for Phase 1 and a prepayment for Phase 2. You can see those two projects combined fees here for a total of $56.2 million. Next slide. As we move forward into construction of future phases, YouTube will make payments based on the new square footage in each phase. In an effort to be clear on the future opportunity, we have summed up the monetary benefits on this slide. Their sum total being $74 million. Next slide. In addition to the over $25 million in payments to the San Bruno Affordable Housing Fund over the lifetime of the project, YouTube is extremely proud of Google's commitment to the regional Bay Area community to assist in addressing housing needs. We have introduced city staff to the Google Housing Fund Manager and will be looking for opportunities for additional partnerships in San Bruno during our construction of the Bay Hill project. Next slide. As a public school graduate and a parent of two school-aged children currently in the San Mateo County Public School District, public schools are near and dear to me. As part of each construction project, an additional fee is paid to both the San Mateo Union High School District and a larger portion paid to San Bruno Park Elementary District. For the entire specific plan area, YouTube will fund over $1.2 million to San Bruno Schools, of which $800,000 goes directly to San Bruno Park Elementary. In addition, I'm extremely excited to announce that just this morning, YouTube paid almost $190,000 to San Bruno Schools for our active construction project at 1400 and 1450 Bay Hill, of which $126,000 will go to San Bruno Park Elementary. In addition to the monetary fees going directly to the San Bruno school system, having YouTube in your school's play area brings with it opportunities for partnership. Just a few of those partnerships that we've done over the years can be seen on this slide. In fact, I understand that the $100,000 helped fund 24 San Bruno childcare centers. Next slide. In addition to development fees, YouTube has engaged an economist to complete a fiscal analysis of additional benefits that the entire project brings to the community of San Bruno. All these elements will provide direct and indirect benefits. Both the sales tax and annual tax increase will go directly to the city's general fund. And we expect the local expenditures to help the city's continued growth trajectory. Next slide. Finally, the project expects, expects to assist with a myriad of issues that are among the city's top items, including replacement of aging infrastructure at Bay Hill and eliminated, elimination of climate-changing greenhouse gas emissions. At this point, I would like to introduce a member of my team, Samantha Fries. Samantha is the Development Executive in charge of our active construction project at 1400 and 1450 Bay Hill and will also lead the Phase 1 team. Samantha.
Thank you, Josh. Thank you and good evening. As Josh mentioned, I'm Samantha Fries, the Development Executive for 1400 and 1450 Bay Hill Drive. And with your approval tonight, Phase 1 of the Bay Hill specific plan. Many of you have seen the construction work going on at 1400 and 1450 Bay Hill, which started last year. We're so grateful that we were able to work with the city to start this exciting project during a difficult and trying time for so many. Over the last year, we've seen as many as 170 people working onsite on any given day. And in early 2022, we'll see that number almost double. Through partnership with our contractor, McCarthy Builders, we've been able to maintain a clean and safe job site while off-hauling over 150,000 cubic yards of soil. In fact, in a single day, we had 60 trucks off-haul over 400 loads of soil. And we've been working really hard to ensure that there are minimal impacts to you, our neighbors. Earlier this year, we submitted our $4.5 million public benefit payment to the city and we're thrilled that it was able to be used for the new rec center. With your approval tonight, we can move forward with Phase 1 of the specific plan with the same high standards that we've implemented for 1400 and 1450 Bay Hill. And now a little about Phase 1. Phase 1 consists of two buildings totaling 4, totaling 440,000 square feet. We'll be increasing our tree count onsite by over 250. We'll install over 800 kilowatts of solar panels to provide onsite electrical, electrical generation and operate as fully electric buildings, eliminating the use of fossil fuels. In addition to the buildings themselves, I'd like to highlight some important features that are part of our Phase 1 project. With Phase 1, we will also be delivering our multimodal transportation hub, which can accommodate up to four shuttles at a time and is nestled away from the public roads. We'll deliver over one mile of public bikeways per San Bruno's walk and bike plan, provide over two acres of accessible public space, and we'll upgrade over four acres of infrastructure and roads. Can't tell you how excited we are at the prospect of starting another project here in San Bruno. And I hope that our presentation tonight makes that clear. I'm now going to turn it over to Chris Sharples with Shop Architects, who will speak more about our design and our commitment to sustainability.
Thanks, Samantha. The framework for how we really began to think about the concept of place-making is really grounded in Google's principles of place, really focusing on community, innovation, nature and economics. Next slide, please. So starting with the existing context, which is mainly a car-centric environment, really transferring to a place that can really promote the pedestrian and the bicycle and experience. Next slide, please. And extending that also to the architecture, which currently is quite scaleless and, and the hardscape, so really bringing landscape and a sense of human scale to this context. Next slide. So how could YouTube's new building support a great public realm experience? Next slide. So really looking at examples within the area where bicycles and pedestrians and landscape and the scale of the architecture work together to create an incredible public realm experience. Next slide, please. Where the buildings actually create relationships within the landscape, pockets of space, and breaking the scale these buildings down using fenestration or materials and landscape to really, again, add to a, a sense of delight. Next, next slide, please. And so this is a, a view looking down on Phase 1. And I want to bring your attention to the way that the building addresses itself to the street. You create these moments of, of open space along the greenway. Again, pocket parks, places for people to gather and collect as they move along the pedestrian path on Bay Hill and Grundy. You also see the amount of solar panels and skylights that we have on the roof of this building, really helping to create a really environmental, strong environmental strategy for these two, two buildings. Next slide. And so this is sort of a close-up of just a part of the building, sort of to describe some of these components. You see the, the green buffer between the road and the bike path, and then beyond that, the pedestrian. So really using landscape to really create these nice soft buffers between these different programs. And at the same time, drawing the landscape into these pockets where people can actually collect, where there would be benches and possibly artwork, and allowing that, that vegetation to actually become part of the architecture of the building. So in a way, really trying to create this sort of true green experience as you move up Bay Hill and, and Grundy. Next slide, please. So this is a view on Bay Hill. You're looking up towards Cherry. And you really start to see how that landscape really plays an impact on really framing that building. But at the same time, seeing the pedestrian way and the bike way along Bay Hill. So really what we believe will be an incredible pedestrian and cycling experience for people moving this way. Next slide. And then this is a view on Grundy. You've just You've just left the intermodal hub, which is, would be directly to your left, and you're walking up towards the entrances into the two buildings. Again, nature and landscape play a big role here in really framing this view and what we believe will be quite a delightful experience for pedestrians. Next slide, please. And the other important thing about this project, and Smith brought this up, was the goal here is lead platinum, and we're doing that on many different levels. Again, not utilizing fossil fuels, really relying on electricity. As I mentioned, PVs on the roof. The skylights will improve the interior likewise, so that we don't have to rely on electric lights all the time. And at the same time, you know, utilizing, you know, battery storage to help allow us to continue to operate these buildings at night. Next slide. The other important factor here is water efficiency. Just with proper fixturing, we can reduce water usage by seventeen percent. And as time goes on with the introduction of the infrastructure for recycling water, we're going to be looking at a overall fifty-two percent reduction in terms of water efficiency for this, for these projects. The thing that, though, we believe is going to be really important, and this really ties to the public realm, is the role of biophilia in landscape and how we not only introduce that on grade, but actually how we bring it up into the building. And as mentioned, you know, bioretention, green roofs to really reduce the amount of stormwater that would impact, you know, the city sewers. Next slide, please. So one last area, you know, as mentioned earlier, another part that we're developing for this phase is at Cherry Plaza, at one thousand Cherry. Next slide. And here, this is, this is a much more scaled space, really a wonderful moment for people to sort of come off of Cherry and take a break and relax in this, in this beautiful pocket park. Next slide is a view underneath the trellis and really starting to appreciate, you know, what this space can be throughout the year. It's a great place for people to sort of hang out, collect, maybe have lunch. Now I'm going to turn it back over to Josh, and he can talk a little about the transportation system.
Thanks so much, Chris. Really exciting stuff. Next slide, please. To align with YouTube's robust transportation demand management plan, the project team has committed to complete a multimodal center with the Phase One construction, which you can see its location on the plan here. The center will allow all of YouTube's shuttle drop-offs and pickups to be completed on YouTube property. Next slide. As mentioned earlier, YouTube will employ a robust transportation demand management program using a myriad of elements to continue to shift demand over time from single occupancy vehicles to active modes and shared resources. At this time, this program has allowed us to reduce our needs for single occupancy vehicles to just forty-three percent. Next slide. We have our entire design and development team with us tonight to answer any questions you might have. And I'd like to close by saying thank you for your time and your participation this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, City Manager. The preference going forward?
Well, that concludes both the staff presentation and the advocate presentation. I think, given that it's nine o'clock, it may be best to take a short break, come back with any questions from the council, and then go into public comment before discussion and deliberation, followed by action.
Excellent. Let's take a five-minute break and be back here at nine oh five. Let's wait another minute. I think a couple of people more, a couple more people need to get into the room or back to their screen. Okay, got all our council members back. Let's resume the meeting. And council, it's our time to ask questions. And who would like to go first? Seeing no hands?
Up through the chair.
I, I'm sorry, I don't have the hosting ability right now, so.
Gotcha.
Councilman Salazar.
All right, so I wanted to start by saying that this is a very exciting project, and as Drew mentioned earlier, it's been many years in the making, and there's been a lot of public input, a lot of conversations around this, and so it is nice to finally be at this point. We were reminded by the city attorney earlier that because of the nature of the actions we're taking today, that we do have to disclose prior conversations around this. And so I wanted to take this opportunity to talk a little bit about my interactions related to this project and working with YouTube and Google over the, over the many years. And we have had very many conversations over that time period, some related to this project and some not. Most of the conversations that I recall having with the team were very early on in the process, so it was still a concept at the time. And, you know, one of the things that, that we have to disclose is, you know, the nature of those conversations and whether they differed in any way from the public information that was presented here tonight. And I just wanted to confirm that during, not during any of the conversations that I've had, that we discuss anything other than the information that's been disclosed publicly, information that was obtained from public input. And most of it really had to do with procedural things and, you know, sort of monitoring how things were moving through the process and making sure that we were doing things according to the city's process. And so that's my disclosure in terms of my contact with the team.
Thank you. Anyone else want to discuss or disclose ex parte communications? Go ahead and start. I'm saying this without that, I apologize.
Okay, so through the chair. I, as everyone knows, I'm, I've only been on the council since last December. So this, this cake was mostly baked by the time I, by the time I joined. I was, I was in the audience at that original meeting way back in twenty seventeen, when we started, when the, when this process was officially started, so as a, as a private citizen. But I have, I have had a few, a few meetings during the course of, of, since I've been on council. And at no point was I presented with or did we discuss any information that wasn't later confirmed in a staff report. So there was no, and the conversations never, never strayed from the topics that were covered tonight and in other public meetings. I will, just another, I just, I do want to thank the city team and the YouTube team and all the consultants involved in the massive amount of effort that it took to get to this point. And this is, I echo my colleague, Councilman Salazar's comment that this is a, this is a, this is a great day. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Hamilton. I don't see Councilwoman Mason yet returned. I'll go ahead and go next. Yes, I'd like to acknowledge the, the effort from, from everybody, from staff, from, from, from the YouTube staff, the consultants, and the public in participating in this, this long deliberate procedure of getting us here tonight. It's, it's a really big deal. As noted in the staff report, we've had a number of meetings with YouTube in public. And we've also, as a council member, had meetings with YouTube and staff to discuss various parts of the project as we're going through the process and phasing of getting to where we're at. I also been on two recent tours of YouTube, once with our fire chief, Delay, and kind of going over what the new development there at the end of Bay Hill. And I also went on a tour with the YouTube staff a couple of weeks ago. Again, like, like my colleagues, my decision is based on the facts here in the public record. There were a few emails going back and forth between YouTube personnel in regards to setting up meetings, but, and availability to go to meetings. But everything that I'm basing my decision on is here, here where it should be in the public. So I'm looking at the screen and seeing Councilwoman Mason is, hasn't yet returned. Has, can somebody check on that? Staff? Oh, there she is. Sorry.
I'm here. Yeah, I would just echo the disclosures around meeting with YouTube. I too had a walkthrough with Chief Delay, and it's probably one of the cleanest construction sites I've ever seen. And then more recently, YouTube invited each of the council members for a walkthrough with, with some of the individuals that you saw tonight. So it was an opportunity for just, I guess, some questions that we may have had. Most of the questions were already part of the planning commission meeting, which I took the time to review and watch this weekend. And there were, you know, all the decisions that I'm making tonight are based on the staff report and the presentation we just heard. But I want to thank everybody, including our staff, for their professionalism through this process and just being available for any questions that arose. Thank you.
Excellent. So City Manager Grogan, I think.
Through the chair. I'm, I'm sorry, I have one, one additional comment. I just want to make a quick, before we go to public comment, if that's okay. I just want to make a comment regarding, regarding housing. As everyone knows, you know, we're, we're phasing a housing crisis across America and in California and here in, here in the Bay Area and San Bruno is on the, is, is, you know, we committed to do our part to, to address it. And while it's true that the, the, you know, there is a housing overlay, there are options for, for five hundred some units as part of, as part of this plan, I want to make it clear to folks who may be, who may be watching that this is a, this is an office park. And the, our commitment as a council and as a city to affordable housing is, and to affordable housing and housing in general, is not changed by this project. And in fact, a project like this provides us with an economic engine. It provides us with both one-time and ongoing revenue so that we're able to provide housing, you know, elsewhere in the city. And I just want to make sure that people understand that by supporting this, this project of replacing an old office park with a much better one does not in any way dilute our commitment to, to providing housing, meeting arena numbers, and helping to address this crisis. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Hamilton. Would someone, someone want to start with questions?
Through the chair?
Sure.
I, I don't have any questions specifically, but are we going now to public comment? Or are we still on council questions?
Based on some information that City Manager gave me, I, we, we can go to public comment if we'd like to now. It was set up to go to council questions, but. City Manager Grogan, any issue with going to, to the public?
No, no, no issue with going to public comment now, Vice Mayor. We typically allow for council members to ask questions on the presentation. If there are no immediate questions or if the council would like to hold, then we go to public comment. And we can do that right now. It's also important to close the public hearing. City Attorney, do you want to address that?
Sure, Mr. Vice Mayor.
You're muted, City Hall.
I heard the first part of it.
The appropriate thing now would be to open the public hearings on both items six A and six B, receive any and all public comment that might, might be offered, and then close both public hearings with one motion, and then bring it back to the council for either questions and/or deliberation. And just as a reminder, each of the actions will require a separate roll call vote. I know that, you know, that we can assist you as well as the clerk, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Yes, definitely will need that assistance. There are ten different items here and many way of reading. So let's open up to public comment or open the public hearing.
Through the chair, one more procedural question. I was, since we have a lot of attendees and I'm starting to see a lot of hands come up, I'm wondering if we could just pause to get an estimate and see, ask everyone who's going to speak to raise their hand now so that we can get a count, and that way we can determine if we need to adjust the amount of time per speaker so that we don't end up running too late. And it looks like the numbers, number of hands has been growing steadily since I started speaking.
Excellent. Let's see, City Clerk, can you give me a hand with that? I'm looking at the, there you go, here's the list.
What is happening? We currently have fourteen hands raised, but yes, it is climbing. Fourteen.
Fourteen at three minutes each would, would be putting us at fourteen, three, fifty-two?
Forty-two.
Forty-two?
Yeah.
So typically, if, if people are repeating the same comment, it would probably be easier to, to, to say, yeah, I also am in favor of the project or if there's anything new to add, but.
Agreed. Okay.
I think we're okay with fourteen times three.
Yeah, I think, I think that's reasonable, and I think maybe not everyone will use their full three minutes. I was concerned that with fifty-six participants, if everybody wanted three minutes, then that, that could get a little crazy. But I, I think the fourteen is probably manageable. the fourteen is probably manageable, so. No concern. Thank you.
All right, let's start.
First is James Rua Gomez.
Uh, good evening, Honorable Vice Mayor Medina, honorable city council members, hard work and city staff, presenters, you guys did an excellent job, and members of the public. My name's James Rua Gomez. I live at eighteen sixty-one Donner Avenue, and I'm speaking on behalf of the San Mateo Building and Construction Trade Council. The San Mateo Building and Construction Trade Council is comprised of twenty-five affiliates and sixteen thousand highly skilled men and women in San Mateo County, many of them with, which live here in San Bruno. Some of them are probably on the call today. If they raised their hands and then lowered their hands, the city council and staff will get a, a number of how many folks are here that I'm speaking on behalf of. Well, we are excited about this project, and we've been involved in this project back to two thousand seventeen to those community members, and we are proud to announce that we are in full support of this project and in full partnership with YouTube, Google. Uh, we have a community workforce agreement, which is also known as Project Labor Agreement for the project that is currently being worked on here in San Bruno, and we have a commitment to negotiate another community workforce agreement for this project. Community workforce agreements follow the Working Families Platform, and they are community benefits by hiring local contractors, there's local workers, local apprentices, returning veterans from our military. And we are proud that these thousands of jobs that they are going to create will follow the Working Family Platform, earn a decent wage, and even though we earn a decent wage, half our earnings are spent, spent on rents and mortgages, healthcare, not only for the worker but for their family. And that healthcare includes optical, optical and dental. Retirement, our retirement dollars go into the stock market as safe investments, uh, uh, back into municipal bonds so we could rebuild our infrastructures. And education, we fund one of the largest privately funded education systems in these United States to ensure that these buildings will be, will be built right the first time, on time and on budget. We, um, I cannot say enough about Google and YouTube for a commitment to this partnership. Many private developers, um, will not make this commitment to the Working Families, uh, or the Working Family Platform, and we are excited that Google, YouTube will, does, and will make that commitment to us. So in closing, let me just say that we're in full support of the, the, uh, Planning Commission's recommendation to approve, and I'm proud to be a, a resident of the city with a heart. And now let's show our community that we're also smart by approving this project and, um, receiving those funds and, and building dilapidated buildings into twenty-first century buildings that are energy efficient. Thank you and have a great evening.
Thank you. Next is David De La Torre. One moment, I'm trying to get Mr. De La Torre unmuted.
Hello, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, whenever you're ready.
Good evening, council members. Um, my name is David De La Torre. Um, I, I, um, I work for the, uh, Labor Union, Local Two-Sixty-One, we're a building trade, uh, construction, uh, trades, uh, affiliate. Um, I represent over five thousand members, uh, throughout the peninsula and, uh, north, uh, Marin, uh, counties. Uh, my office sent a, a, a letter of support for this project. Um, projects like this help us, uh, help our members piecemeal their, their, um, their retirement, their healthcare, and, and, um, provide them with the, uh, um, of, of, provide, provide them with, uh, the hours to, uh, support their family. But, um, aside from that, I'm calling, I'm calling in as a, as a resident. I am a lifetime resident. I live on the nine-hundred block of, uh, Hensley. I've seen that, uh, the Bay Hill Park office, uh, um, area dormant for some time. Um, I know some of the buildings were, uh, partially vacant, um, since, um, Facebook has taken over, uh, YouTube has taken over the, uh, the area. It, um, has definitely flourished, it has improved. Um, and I call in, uh, again, just to voice my, uh, opinion of the, um, support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Rich Koenig.
Hello, are you there?
Yes, whenever you're ready.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, good evening, Vice Mayor Medina and council members. Uh, first of all, thank you for your service to San Bruno. My name is Rich Koenig. I am a current, uh, and lifetime resident of San Bruno. I'm also the business representative for the Sheet Metal Workers Union, Local One-O-Four. Uh, we support this proposal tonight. We believe this project will benefit, uh, the local community and the city of San Bruno. Uh, we believe this project will stimulate the local economy by providing good middle-class union construction jobs with living wages, health and retirement benefits, uh, for our members that live in San Mateo County and also our members that live in San Bruno, because we dispatch our members from, our South San Francisco is our dispatch point for our, uh, members. And, uh, this project will ensure sustainable career pathways, as James mentioned, into union construction apprenticeships and provide training programs for local youth. Uh, for example, I, I graduated from Cappuccino High School, and I've, uh, had a great career, uh, about thirty-five years, uh, with the Sheet Metal Worker Union. And, uh, I wanted to add that our programs, our apprenticeship programs offer a direct entry, a certain percentage for, uh, United States military veterans, and also for graduates of the, uh, Trades Introductory Program, which is, uh, held up at College of San Mateo. And so, uh, I'd like to lastly add that we, uh, the Local One-O-Four and the Building Trades has a long-established, uh, successful relationship with Google, YouTube. We're currently working on their projects, uh, and a couple of projects in Bay Hill, uh, at this time. So, uh, we've been a great partner with YouTube, Google, and they've committed to, uh, this partnership. So for these reasons, we urge this council to join the San Mateo County Building Trades, uh, and approve this plan tonight as proposed. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Next is, next is Paul Lipinski.
Good evening. Um, I don't like the housing part of this. If you, uh, if you go for the maximum units, you're going to have over a thousand units within a quarter mile of each other between the Bay Hill project and the Mills Park project, and that's just going to be way too much congestion. So I think you really need to think long and hard about approving that many housing, uh, units in this small amount of area. Uh, the second thing is if you're going to reduce traffic by forty-three percent, or, or not traffic, but people driving by forty-three percent, why don't you just reduce the, uh, parking spaces by that amount and force people to take public transportation? Uh, the second thing is, uh, if you do build the housing, uh, you, the briefing was, uh, there was mention that, um, penalties would apply for people that would, uh, were not meeting that forty-three percent, um, limit. So who pays that penalty is the people that, uh, are going to live in those, um, housing units. Are they going to have to pay a penalty for not, uh, or for driving their cars? And then, um, my last question is, will there be a bridge over cherry so we don't have to stop every time somebody wants to cross the street? Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Melinda Evers. One moment, I'm trying to get Melinda unmuted. Melinda, can you hear us?
Yes, but I did not raise my hand. Apologies.
Okay. Next is Saeda Stroud. Saeda, can you hear us?
I can.
Hello, whenever you're ready.
Sure. Um, thank you so much for allowing a, a brief moment for this comment. Thank you, City Council. Uh, my name is Saeda Stroud. I'm the outgoing director for the Bay Area Entrepreneur Center of Skyline College, located right on San Mateo Avenue, and I wanted to extend our support of the resolution, um, for the Bay Hill specific plan and expansion project, and specifically highlight the partnership and support that Skyline College has received from YouTube, Google over the years. Um, over the years, YouTube and Google have supported Skyline College efforts and initiatives, and has also played a valuable role in supporting the efforts of the Bay Area Entrepreneur Center as we work to rebuild our local business community during this pandemic. So we support this plan and, um, wish them, wish them good luck and hope you all are well and healthy. Thank you.
Next is Brian Benderluth.
Good evening.
Brian, can you hear?
Yep, yep, you got me?
Yes, whenever you're ready.
Hey, thanks. Good evening, Vice Mayor Medina, City Council members. Tonight I'm representing the San Bruno Education Foundation. We submitted, uh, a pre-read simple letter, and, and so for time I won't restate the content of that letter, but I did want to expand on an idea that was raised in the YouTube presentation. The word partner or partnership were used several times, and that really resonated with me. Most of you know me well enough to know how much I value partnerships and, and kind of what a partnership brings, where each entity contributes something that makes us all stronger. And while we certainly appreciate the very generous financial support from YouTube to our schools over the years, um, the thing that stands up for me in our partnership kind of goes beyond simply cutting a check. It's the, uh, the, uh, the occasions where they've, for example, opened their doors and invited us onto their campus for a fundraiser, when they've contributed executive time and energy to a multi-month planning process where our schools developed the portrait of the graduate. Um, and maybe most notably, more recently, when our schools went to remote learning, um, in the initial stages of the COVID pandemic, and we reached out to our community partners, recognizing that some of our students didn't have adequate computers or internet service at home, and recognized that they would be left behind. Um, YouTube and Google were certainly one of, one of our first phone calls, and their response was essentially, "How can we help?" and jumped in with both feet. And I, I cite those instances as, for me, being indicative of the kind of partners they've been to our schools and our community, um, far beyond, you know, simply cutting checks. And so I'm excited tonight as we look together about how we can ensure that, that kind of strong partnership can continue well into the future, and thank you for your time.
Next is Alex Melendez.
Uh, hello, City Council, City Staff. Um, Alex Melendez, I don't really have prepared comments here. Um, I'm, uh, assuming as, uh, uh, somebody said earlier that you guys have had a chance to read my email. Um, I have left some things out of my comments that I sent in my, uh, email regarding, uh, housing, uh, in contrast to one of the other comments earlier. I actually don't think there's enough housing. Uh, that being said, uh, I would be remiss if I did not mention the many other community benefits that I think that this project does provide. Uh, I think that's something I really forgot to highlight. Um, this, you know, first phase of this, uh, proposal really does have a lot of great benefit for our community. It's, YouTube has been a proven partner when it comes to our edu, our various, uh, uh, you know, education endeavors, either the, uh, School Foundation or Skyline. Uh, it has the support of, uh, two childcare organizations that I really respect in San Mateo County, is Build Up San Mateo County and, uh, Foresees. Uh, additionally, uh, the existing housing overlays, oh, and obviously the tremendous union support, which you do not always, uh, see in a lot of other, uh, developments. Um, uh, what was I saying? Oh, yes, with the existing overlays as well. Uh, five hundred and seventy-three, while, as I mentioned, I personally do not think is enough, uh, is not something to laugh at, and it is adding housing into an existing office area that does not currently zone for it. Uh, I think that that is still better than nothing. So I do want to, I, I do want to highlight that. I want to appreciate, uh, Council Member, uh, Hamilton's comments and the commitment of the city of San Bruno to try to develop more housing in San Bruno to create a more inclusive and diverse San Bruno. And overall, if you take the housing part out of it, I am ninety percent happy with, uh, the proposal, uh, that's going on here. It's going to be a great economic development for our city. Um, and I think I want to really appreciate the work that the city has done on this proposal. So thank you.
Next is Dean Moser.
Good evening, uh, council members and, uh, staff, uh, of San Bruno and, uh, all the consultants that, uh, have worked on this project. A little that I know, in August of two thousand sixteen, that I was going to have, uh, YouTube's as a neighbor and, uh, venture on a five-year, uh, project in, uh, seeing what was going to happen at, um, Bay Hill. Uh, we're totally excited about Bay Hill as, uh, the property owner's an eight-oh-one, eight-fifty-one trader, and, um, we, we couldn't be more excited. I think that it's obviously going to make our, uh, property, uh, you know, more valuable, and, um, we're, you know, looking forward to trying to do some development on our property, and hopefully it doesn't take five years, uh, to get approvals. But, uh, nevertheless, I think everybody has done, uh, a great job on, uh, this project, and we're happy to have, uh, YouTube's be our neighbor, and we're also very pleased, uh, to be part of the, uh, San Bruno, uh, community. So, uh, thank you very much for, uh, your time and, uh, all five years of effort. Uh, we appreciate it, and I think you've done a phenomenal job. Thank you.
Next is Linda Larson.
Yes, good evening, Honorable Vice Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Linda Larson. My address is fourteen seventy-seven Flora Bunda in Burlingame, but the majority of my life is spent at the shops at Tanforan, where I have been the general manager for the past ten years. I'm here tonight to speak in favor of the Bay Hill specific plan and to support YouTube's Phase One, as they have been an amazing corporate partner for the city for San Bruno for many years. Since two thousand seventeen, YouTube and Google.org has contributed one hundred thousand dollars per year to the Community Grants Fund. After the two thousand eighteen shooting at YouTube, the Google Foundation and YouTube employees donated over three hundred thousand dollars to San Bruno First Responder Effectiveness Strategic Initiative. These donations funded a mobile command vehicle to assist the San Bruno Police and Fire Departments during critical incident or natural disasters. They have been an annual sponsor of the Skyline President's Breakfast. In response to the pandemic impacts, they donated funding, which we've heard, to San Bruno Park Elementary School District to cover, um, costs associated with distance learning, and they donated one hundred thousand dollars to San Mateo County Childcare Fund, providing emergency grants to childcare operators. Additionally, as a board member of the San Bruno Chamber of Commerce, I can attest to the many contributions and resources YouTube has provided to our business community, and wish to thank them for hosting many events at their facility and for appointing Rebecca Prozan, their West Coast Government Affairs and Public Policy Head, as a respected, active and involved member of the board. I know you're all very worst on, very well-versed on the benefits of this project, specifically the economic benefits, so I won't list them again. I simply wish to highlight and applaud the extraordinary partnership YouTube has with the city and to remind us all how fortunate we are to have their world-class corporate campus in San Bruno. I believe the Bay Hill specific plan is an absolutely pivotal project for San Bruno's future, and I wholeheartedly support it as well as YouTube's Phase One. Thank you for my three minutes and good night.
Next speaker is Eddie.
Good evening, uh, council members and good evening, uh, city staff. Um, my name is Eddie Young, and I am the president and CEO of the Police Credit- My name is Eddie Young, and I am the President and CEO of the Police Credit Union of California. In short, I will be a neighbor, actually, I am a neighbor of YouTube, Google right now, and I guess I will be in ground zero when Phase One really kicks in for them. I'm actually here in, speaking in support of the Bay Hill Specific Project. I think that YouTube and the Police Credit Union of California really have shared a great deal of insight about the potential, as well as the benefit of being located in San Bruno. It is one in which a city that affords us, our staff, a greater degree of flexibility, greater degree of comfort as to traveling to and from work, and I think that this project will bring great benefit to all within this San Bruno area. So, again, I want to voice my support, wholehearted support for this project. Thank you.
Next is Juan Espinoza Carpenter's.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, City Council Members, Members of Staff. Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Juan Espinoza. I'm a field representative for Northern California Regional Council Carpenter's, and I work out of Local 217, which is in Foster City. We dispatch members throughout San Mateo County. In our local, we have about 1,600 members. Throughout Northern California, we have over 38,000 members. And there's so many good things about this project. I'm very proud. Google and YouTube have been great partners with the Carpenters. I'm calling to urge you guys to approve the Planning Commission recommendation. This is a project that is being well-rounded, well-taught, and all the benefits for the community is just, is just amazing. So please approve this development, and thank you for your time. Have a great night.
Next is Heather Rothenberg.
Good evening, City Council Members and City Staff Members. My name is Heather Rothenberg, and I'm an employee at YouTube. What makes me a bit unique is that I was hired and began working for YouTube as the head of our Global Claims Council during the pandemic, and it almost feels like I'm part of an employment equivalent of a new generation, because this experience of working for a company but not getting to actually be in our offices yet is pretty unprecedented until the COVID pandemic. However, that did not stop me, right after being hired, from jumping in the car with my wife and dog and driving around Bay Hill and the rest of San Bruno to explore. One of the things I was super excited about was the proximity to BART, so I can ride the train to San Bruno and then my scooter from the BART to the office, one of my favorite ways to commute. San Francisco is home, but I do love to eat, and I can't wait to work my way through the restaurants across San Bruno when we do get to go back to the office. The combo Molly Stones on Ace Hardware is brilliant, and what a great downtown. Thank you for the years of hard work that led to this meeting and the important decisions that you will make. On behalf of YouTubers like me who are working remotely right now, I can assure you that we cannot wait to be in San Bruno. Thank you so much for your public service and the chance to speak tonight.
Next is Doug.
Okay, can everybody hear me?
Yes, whenever you're ready.
Great, thank you. Councilmembers, City Clerk, Vice Mayor, City Managers, Attorneys, Consultants, Planners, and all participants. Good evening. My name is Doug Hood, and I'm an owner and manager of 801-851 Traeger in the Bay Hill Specific Plan. I'd like to thank everyone tonight that had a hand in this process, and our ownership has been involved with the process since the beginning. At this time, I would like to congratulate YouTube and congratulate the City of San Bruno. The Bay Hill Specific Plan will be a fantastic project, and will be a milestone for the City of San Bruno and YouTube for years to come. We will continue to support and, with YouTube in their process to complete the Bay Hill Specific Plan, and all along this process, YouTube's been a great neighbor for us. However, and hopefully, the process will be a bit quicker in the near future. And I know YouTube and the ownership of 801 and 851 Traeger would appreciate the acceleration of the campus expansion. So again, I would like to thank everyone that contributed in this process, and we look forward to the future of the Bay Hill Specific Plan. Thank you.
The next speaker is Andrew Cusson. One moment, I'm trying to get Andrew unmuted.
All right. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Vice Mayor, Councilmembers and City Staff. My name is Andrew Cusson, and I am a Senior Manager of Investments with Regency Centers. Regency is the owner and operator of the Bay Hill Shopping Center, which is included in the Bay Hill Specific Plan. I am speaking tonight to encourage you to adopt the various resolutions and ordinances in front of you in order to implement the Bay Hill Specific Plan. This plan has been in development for years, and I want to highlight the efforts and commend city staff on getting it to its current form. This plan, when finally implemented, will be a boon for the neighborhood and the City of San Bruno. Regency looks forward to maintaining a first-class retail shopping center for the residents of San Bruno, our business owners, and the future Googlers and YouTubers on their campus next door. Additionally, we are excited to explore residential development options at our shopping center to help alleviate an unprecedented housing crisis in the Bay Area. Again, I encourage you to vote to adopt the Specific Plan, certify the EIR, and allow Google to move forward with its Phase One plans. Thank you all.
That was the last speaker.
The last speaker. Excellent.
Through the chair. If you're ready to entertain a motion, I will move that we close the public hearing.
Hold a second. Excellent.
And I'll do a roll call vote. Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Excellent. So now we're ready for council comments. I did want to address some of the questions from Mr. Wapinski. The housing plan is 573 units. The penalty for the driving is, is not to the homeowners, it's to the business, and it's called a mitigation fee, and there are no plans in this, in the specific plan to build a bridge for vehicle traffic over chair.
Through the chair, I think the question was about a bridge for pedestrians over chair, and I don't, I don't believe that's in the plan as well.
That's absolutely correct. No bridge over chair. Who would like to start with questions?
Through the chair, I, I don't have any questions, you know, and, you know, a lot of people have commented how this has been a long process, and we've been discussing a lot of the details over a long period of time, and I, I think the information has always been very, you know, it's, it's come very freely, and it's, we've done a really good job of putting it out on, on the internet and getting people involved, and so I, I really don't have any specific questions on what's being proposed. I did want to make one comment, just as a clarification, because some of the comments, and I, I think people have a good idea of what, what we're actually doing tonight, but I did want to just sort of clarify that, you know, our first action will be to approve the EIR and the specific plan, so it's basically a roadmap for what, what will become Bay Hill. And the second action is related specifically to Phase One, which are the buildings that were highlighted in the presentation. So there, there will be a lot more construction to come. There's no housing involved in this first phase, so there will be, you know, more to come, but tonight's action specifically is focused on, on Phase One, and of course, approval of the, of the overall plan.
Thank you, Councilman Salazar. Anyone else? I'll go ahead and ask a couple of questions, and in the, in the WSA, that the water capacity is sufficient. However, how, how close are we to, at one point, will there not be enough water? It's, it's something just that, as we're expecting all of this development, how does, how does approving this impact future development?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We will have our consultant, Amy Quong, who is an analyst, address that question. So Melissa, I think Amy's in the room, and Amy, if you will unmute yourself and address the question.
Hi, yes, so Amy Quong from West Yost. We helped the city prepare their water supply assessment and the Water Supply Assessment Addendum, and we're also working with city staff on the urban water management plan that will be coming on October 26. So basically, in terms of planning of water supplies, we work on first-hand demand projections. So the city also is in a parallel effort working on their Water Master Plan, where we, you know, looked at the current demands, what is proposed to be built, and the next, you know, the urban plan looks at 2045, and basically, that's build-out for the city, and looks at everything that would build out in the city and what the demands are. Then we compare it to the available water supplies. So for the most recent urban plan, the biggest change has been the supply reliability from SFPUC. It has dropped significantly because of the Bay Delta Plan Amendment, which is requiring flow objectives in the San Joaquin River, additional flow in the rivers for environmental. So the water supply for SFPUC wholesale customers have decreased. However, the city does have groundwater supply, so that really is an important piece of your supply portfolio, so that helps you during the drought and dry periods where you don't have to rely on SFPUC supply, and you can use groundwater to supplement it. So we looked at demands, compared the supplies in normal, dry, and multiple dry years in the urban plan. And basically, what the conclusion we came to is that, based on the supply available, there'll be need to be a 24% reduction in demands, in total demands, that would be needed to meet supplies in those really dry years. And, you know, we assume that the Bay Delta Plan will be in effect. However, the Bay Delta Plan, there's a lot of uncertainties right now, lots of lawsuits, as well as a lot of the agencies are working on a voluntary agreement, so that the reductions won't be as bad. So there's a lot of uncertainties there, but we're planning for the worst, you know, just so you know what, you know, may happen, and what may happen is that in normal years, you have enough supply. In those dry years, single dry years and multiple dry years, there'll be up to a 24% reduction projected. So that is when the water shortage contingency plan that will come up in October 26 meeting, that will be important to have, because it has steps in there to, to, you know, to indicate what the city needs to do to hit the percentage reductions. So stage one, you know, 10%, stage two, 20%, and stage three would be a 30% reduction, and the mitigation measures that need to be in place for that. Sorry, it gave you a lot of background, but hopefully that helps you understand what that 24% means.
Yeah, we have enough water, and we're, we're going to get an update on, in October on, on, on our plan.
Yes, so, you know, in the last drought, you know, the city did show that it could reduce over 20%. They had conservation, and that was able to reduce their demand. So, you know, with, you know, assuming that, you know, the customers can do the same kind of conservation, if, you know, supplies get reduced again, that there will be enough supplies for the project.
Excellent, thank you. Any other questions from council, or I can continue? I don't see any hands. I, I find the, the plans amazing with the number of trees, and likely, as a question besides the appreciation for trees, street sweeping. Will street sweeping be necessary, and if so, who, who pays for that?
Councilmember Medina, is your question during construction or normal course of street sweeping during the, the normal course of business as the city does on a weekly basis?
Typically, my question's for, for after the construction's complete. I've seen the street sweepers there at YouTube currently, but yeah, was primarily the concern is, who's going to pay for that? I know that we, we have efforts underway of looking at our street sweeping and with our limited budgets, and, and I just also wanted to confirm that the maintenance of all the green, the beautiful green walkways, that's being maintained by the developer, or is there going to be like a property owner association or the city?
So, Councilmember Medina, through the Phase, Phase One, YouTube is granting to the city ownership of a portion of Grundy. Currently, we do the street sweeping as a part of our normal operations in the Bay Hill Office Park, where we have some roads we own and feed, other roads we have an easement over. We maintain both street sweeping and roadway maintenance under the plan that will continue. All of the landscaping improvements on private space will be the responsibility of that property owner. The landscaping within the public right-of-way will be the responsibility of the city.
Got it. Another question I have is for, for the area where the roads leading to the transit center with where all the shuttle buses are going to be circulating, is it planned to have stronger road sections installed to handle that additional load?
So the multimodal station is on private property, and so that is Google slash YouTube private property, where the multimodal station will be. I think your question is along the essentially collector rules, Bay Hill and Grundy, that will be the entrance and the exit for those, for that private multimodal station. Will the roads be designed and constructed in a way to carry the traffic? Is there, I believe we do have our Public Works Director, Haywan Brice, as a panelist. Haywan, will you address that question? Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. I wanted to address the, the question about the landscaping that is being maintained by YouTube, and I apologize, while I was looking that up, I, I missed that question.
Well, first, thank you for clarifying that the median landscaping will be maintained by YouTube. The question- The question was with regard to Bay Hill and Grundy, will the roads be constructed in a manner that will be sufficient for the shuttle bus traffic that will be entering and exiting the Google slash YouTube multimodal station?
Yes, so when it is being designed, we have to look at the types of loads that the roadway will be expected to handle and that will be factored in the pavement design.
Those are my questions. Any other council member have any? Okay.
Vice Mayor Medina, I don't know if you see my hand.
I cannot, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. Just a question, comment. So thank you for the thorough presentation. I think it answered a number of questions along with the staff report. I think just from members of the public, one of the areas that we've heard about is infrastructure. And we saw it in the, in the presentation today and I just want to reiterate, and I'm not sure who would answer this question, but that part of this entire development is going to provide new infrastructure for these areas that are going to be developed in addition to any impact fees that would go as a regular course of business for the City of San Bruno at this point.
And to the Director, Brice, can you take the first part of that and then we may provide additional information here at City Hall?
Yes, so certainly where Grundy is being realigned, all of the new infrastructure will be provided by YouTube. That includes, well, aside from the private utilities, of course PG&E would be reinstalling those, but sewer, water, storm, sidewalks, where that is being aligned, YouTube will be funding that infrastructure as well as we've run various models and where other utilities need to be upsized, they will also be responsible for making sure that they have capacity for their site. And as well as other infrastructure improvements such as transportation, they will be paying their fair share for certain projects in and around Bay Hill to help support the specific plan.
Great.
Creation.
Yeah, and just to piggyback off of that, we'll, we'll share one slide here that is in, in regard to citywide infrastructure. And so with regard to the development agreement, it's important to note that there are area development impact fees where YouTube will pay a portion of projects that are specific to the planning area of the Bay Hill Specific Plan. Part of Councilmember Mason's question or comment was really wanting to clarify and point out that there is also citywide development impact fees. And in the Phase 1, those, and the prepayment for Phase 1 and 2, that's a total of $14.8 million, that is citywide impact fees to go towards various community facilities, parks, recreation, roads and things of that nature, as well as $10.3 million for affordable housing. We currently just have just over $3.5 million in our Affordable Housing Trust Fund when this prepayment is made, again, expected middle of 2022. That will add another $10.3 million to that fund and triple the amount of money, more than triple the amount of money that's in that fund. And additional community benefit payment that can go to various infrastructure and services in the community of 26 million. And so that is just the first prepayment. All other phases in the DA, 73 million for a total of 130 million of community benefits. So yes, absolutely, there, there is money for infrastructure outside of the planning area, affordable housing, as well as additional community benefit money that the city council, council and councils will allocate.
Right, but just so that it doesn't appear to be a big windfall, we're not getting all that at one time, correct? And the city has a number of its own obligations that it needs to invest in as well. The other, I just wanted to make, just thank everybody who submitted public comment. We, we received a number of letters from our partners in the building trades, including not just one from the building trades, but also from the members of Operating Engineers Local Union 3, IBW Local Union 617, Plumbers Local 467, and our Apprenticeship Training Center, Sheet Metal Workers Union Local 104, Carpet Linoleum Soft Tow Workers Local Union 12. And in, in the letter that we received, which was substantially similar, if not identical, you know, I just want to highlight that the YouTube project for their two buildings continued through the pandemic and, and that they moved forward using 100% of union trades, which is quite remarkable when so many businesses were, were pulling back. I did look further into the childcare assistance that was provided through COVID and 24 of those grants went to childcare centers in San Bruno. And so while we're looking at, you know, this is a long-term vision for San Bruno and the home of YouTube, I do hope that some of the other partner, partner corporations that are coming to San Bruno that are interested in San Bruno are taking note because YouTube has really made an effort to establish not just relationships, but to learn what San Bruno's needs are so that as they're coming in and growing in San Bruno, they're also assisting, as you, as we all heard tonight, in various areas within San Bruno. So my questions were answered. I'm excited to approve this item tonight and to move onward. It's exciting. Thank you.
Excellent. No more questions. We have a lot of different things ahead of us here.
All right, through the chair, if you'll allow me, I would like to make a motion to introduce the first resolution, which is approving the water supply assessment
Looking for a second.
Hold a second.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Motion carries.
We'll take turns. I'll, I'll, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution certifying the EIR and adopting CEPA findings, facts, statements of overriding considerations, and a mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the Bay Hill Specific and Google, the Bay Hill Specific Plan and Google Phase 1 project.
I'll second.
Excellent.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, so I'll motion to adopt resolution amending the San Bruno general plan to ensure consistency with the Bay Hill Specific Plan.
And I'll second.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, and I will make a motion to adopt a resolution adopting the Bay Hill Specific Plan for the Bay Hill area of the city.
And I will second.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I don't know how I got all the long ones. I'd like to make a motion to waive the first reading and introduce ordinance adding Chapter 12.290 Bay Hill Specific Plan districts to the City of San Bruno Municipal Code, establishing regulations for parcels within the Bay Hill Specific Plan.
I'll second.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And I'll motion to waive the first reading and introduce ordinance amending the City of San Bruno zoning map for the Bay Hill Specific Plan area.
I'll second.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, and I guess we'll keep going through item B and I will make a motion to adopt the resolution approving the phased vesting tentative track subdivision map with outline adjustments, realigning of Grundy Lane involving vacation of current public roadway utility easements and dedication of new roadway right-of-way and fee and granting of new utility easements and a vacation of portions of Elm Avenue as shown on the map for Google LLC's property in the Bay Hill area of the city.
I'll second.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
You're up, Tom. Keep going.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to waive the first reading and introduce an ordinance approving a development agreement between the City of San Bruno and Google LLC, a California Limited Liability Company, with a Google project located in the Bay Hill Office Park.
I'll second.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I'll motion to adopt resolution approving an architectural review permit for Phase 1 of Google LLC's development plans in the Bay Hill area of the city.
I'll second.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Motion carries.
We've gotten to the last one, adopt a resolution authorizing various, I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing various curb markings, curb marking changes along frontages of 900 Cherry Avenue and 1,000 Cherry Avenue in the Bay Hill area of the City of Phase 1 of Google LLC's development plans.
I will second.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Motion carries. Try reading all of those at once.
That's why you're the president? What a, what, what a wonderful night. We have a, a growing partnership with YouTube and I look forward to the next groundbreaking there.